Come on kiddo, I just changed your diaper.
Yeah, throw them in the trash, don't flush it.
What, what is it?
In my 25 years of plumbing, this is the worst stench I have ever smelled.
How did this happen?
You fed the monster these so-called flushable wipes.
Monster?
They call it the clog. It's two G's because it's extra gross. You see, packaging will have you believe they are safe for plumbing and flushable, but in fact, they are not. They combine with other sewage in the pipes and become the clog. This is the monster you created.
I didn't know.
Next time, save yourself the headache and the repair bill and throw those flushable wipes into trash.
What? Oh my. Tammy, do you see how much this is gonna cost us?
Don't feed the clog monster. If it's not toilet paper, don't flush it.
Hey, new house looks great. How are you liking it here?
Well, I...
You wouldn't expect this in your home.
What?
Why on earth would you do it in ours? Hillsborough County put waste in its place.
Welcome to a meeting of your planning commission, the official local planning agency for the cities of Tampa, Temple Terrace, Plan City, and unincorporated Hillsborough County. The Planning Commission provides innovative leadership and long-range vision that contributes to the creation of a thriving prosperous community that offers opportunity, fairness, and choice in how we live, move, learn, work, and play. For more information about the Planning Commission, please call 813-272-5940. Follow us on social media or visit our website at planhillsborough.org.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the February 10th, 2020 regular meeting of the Hillsborough County City County Planning Commission. We thank you for attending this meeting. Your participation and comments are encouraged. Please sign the register at the rear of the room and turn off any devices that may be a distraction. If you wish to address the commission on an agenda item, we ask that you please complete the appropriate public comment sign-in sheet at the back of the room. When addressing the commission, please state your name, address, and speak directly into the microphone. For those of you who are not familiar with our process, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be introduced. Staff will give their presentation with a 15-minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a 15-minute time limit. Following presentations, members of the public may address the Planning Commission when recognized by the chairman. Public comment will be heard for three minutes per person. The applicant will be afforded a three-minute period for rebuttal or response. Planning commissioners will ask questions. Public comment will be closed. Then upon a motion, second, and discussion, a vote will be taken. With that introduction, I'll ask Commissioner Green to lead us in the prayer and pledge of allegiance. All rise.
Heavenly Father, we come before you today with praise and reverence. We thank you for this day and for the many blessings bestowed upon each of us. We thank you for this great country and the opportunity to live in freedom, and we ask your blessings for our leaders and for our men and women in uniform, whether home or abroad. Please bless these proceedings and give each of us here today the wisdom to make decisions that are in the best interest of the people of Hillsborough County. These we ask in your holy name. Amen.
By allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Green. Roll call, please.
Bernstein.
Here.
Cardenas.
Here.
Dickerson. Dix.
Here.
Doughty.
Here.
Green.
President.
Joseph.
Here.
Cress.
Here.
Moreno. Powell.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Thrower.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Next on our... Next up is approval of the minutes for the regular meeting from January 13th, 2020, and the public hearing on county plan amendments from January 13th, 2020. Any discussion on those minutes? No discussion? Would someone like to make a motion for approval?
Make a motion.
Okay, Commissioner Powell has made the motion. Commissioner Cress is seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Minutes approved unanimously. Thank you. Next up is the public input. If there is any public comment, anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any items that are on our agenda today, please come forward. Okay, no public comment. We'll move on to the presentation on the climate survey results.
Good afternoon, Megan Baturney. Today, I am going to be discussing our climate survey results. This is the second climate survey that Plan Hillsborough has conducted. In 2018, the commission asked that we conduct one here. As a former member of the Civil Service Board, we had the privilege of working with the 20 agencies across Hillsborough County. And I have to say, it was very rare for other agencies to conduct this type of survey. So I really want to applaud this board here, as well as our executive directors, for being willing to quote-unquote "pull back the curtain," take a look under the hood, and allow staff to give their open and honest feedback. So thank you so much. So first off, it's all really good news, and so I'm really excited to present these results to you. You should have found a copy on your seat today. As we talk, I will be going over the demographics. We will be looking at the results in a variety of different ways. And then we will talk about our values. And then lastly, the summary and the next steps. As with 2018, HR Seoul helped us conduct this survey, and it was done online. Although this survey is anonymous and we do not track any IPN numbers or look at who in the staff is taking such, because we do want the honest, open feedback. However, we do ask that they indicate which demographic group they are part of. So they could choose whether they would indicate whether they were part of which department, what level of they are within the organization, as well as the years of service. We do this so that we can identify overall trends and key themes within certain demographics. Again, as in 2018, we had 100% participation, so that's really great. Here, we look at our overall favorable results by category. So there were seven categories on this online survey. And these look at the percent of individuals who agree or strongly agree, and so the favorable category. Out of the... In all of these, six out of the seven were 70% or higher, which is really great. And then, as with 2018's survey, compensation and benefits scored the lowest of all categories. However, it did go up 1% since 2018. But it's really great that we had six out of the seven score 70% or higher. The results from 2020 were also benchmarked against a few other areas. We looked at how we measured up against our 2018 scores, our industry, which is government, and also the global scores. Those are the scores that were answered within Survey Monkey. So there's quite a bit in there. And so we were able to see how we measured up. And as you can see, we scored the highest against these benchmarks in almost every category. This really reflects the work of our staff in collectively hearing the feedback in 2018 and leveraging the strengths and working on the areas of opportunity. On our next slide, we see where we look at the benchmarks of 2018 versus 2020. So we saw three big improvements since 2018 when we benchmark against ourselves. Those three would be senior management clearly explains the agency's business objectives, my organization's fiscal well-being is stable, and the goals my supervisor sets for me are clear. Also, we saw three largest improvements since 2018 against government benchmarks. Those are senior management and employees trust each other. I understand how my work impacts the organization's business goals. And communication between senior leaders and employees are good in my organization. As with anything, we did have three lower scores since 2018. Those would be I am compensated fairly relative to my local market. I am satisfied with my total benefits package, and my supervisor and I have a good working relationship. Also, we have three lower scores since 2018 when we look at the government benchmarks. I am compensated fairly relative to my local market. I am satisfied with my overall compensation, and employees here are willing to take on new tasks as needed. Again, we noticed that the trend in the comp and benefits is lower and that it will be a continuing theme as we do look at these results. On our next slide, the really important part is that we have both key strengths and opportunities. And this slide is capturing the areas we can further leverage and the areas of where we will be asking more questions. I think it's really important to notice that under benchmarks, on average, Plan Hillsborough outperforms almost all government industry and prior year's benchmarks, which I think is really great, and I'm sure that you would agree with that as well. Next question we have is our employee net promoter score. The question is, how likely is it that you would recommend Plan Hillsborough to a friend or colleague on a scale of 1 to 10, or actually 0 to 10? The way that this question is, it's factored a little bit different than the rest of the results. If an employee indicates 9 to 10, they are considered a promoter of our organization. If they select 0 to 6, they are considered a detractor. And if they select 7 to 8, they are considered passives. The way this is calculated is that they take the score of the amount of promoters and subtract the amount of detractors to get the net promoter score. The passives are not included in this calculation. And so as you can see, we scored 24. There were a few detractors, but our score was lower by 14 points than in 2018. Yes, this score is lower than what we had in 2018. And while we have other questions that are more specific, we will be asking more questions about this and why that potentially happened. This slide is an engagement pyramid. As you may have heard before, Maslow's hierarchy of needs. And on the lowest is the sense of that humans need a sense of security, shelter, et cetera. So on the engagement pyramid, it is similar to that. So on the lowest level, we have total rewards. That would be it's all about me and it's about my paycheck, and it's about what I'm getting. As we move up, you'll see that folks become transitioned from the me to the we. And so the most engaged agencies are those that are higher up in the engagement pyramid. We have... We're very proud to say that in this agency, we are functioning at the four of an engaged agency, which means again, most of our staff has transitioned from the me mentality to the we, in the bigger picture mentality. It is also determined that cooperation and teamwork is the key driver of that engagement. So that's something that we will continue to be utilizing and working on here in this organization. We also asked our staff, how well do you believe the agency is living its values? Transparency and stewardship were rated the highest, and innovation was rated the least. When we look at this table, when we... 2018 versus 2020, it's very important to note that anything in the green is things that we... Are the percentages that have increased since 2018. As you can see, even though innovation was rated the lowest seen in our organization, it still went up from 10% to 19% and extremely, and stayed the same in very, went lowered in somewhat, and stayed the same in not. So that means we have moved the scale from those in somewhat up to extremely. So I still think, even though it's lower, it's still we have moved the needle on that since 2018. We also looked at what are our highest and lowest scoring statements. The three highest statements were, my organization has a safe work environment, my coworkers and I have a good working relationship, and I believe in the agency's vision and strategy. Our lowest were, I am compensated fairly relative to my local market, employees in my organization willingly accept change, and I am satisfied with my overall compensation. Again, we see the comps and benefits trends continuing. So lastly, our summary and action plan. Those questions in the category of working at Plan Hillsborough overall in my job were the highest rated. It was determined that the key driver of our engagement is cooperation and teamwork, and that there are areas to strengthen would be compensation and benefits. So the next steps also will be... We are going to conduct a compensation study to further examine the areas that we kept hearing about. Also, the executive directors and myself will be meeting with the consultant to discuss the action planning, further areas of focus, and solidifying the next steps. So thank you for listening, and may I clarify any of this information for you?
Okay, any questions? Commissioner Doughty?
Oh, no.
Sorry. Any questions from anyone? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We will move on to the 2019 Reporting Strategic Plan Implementation and Measure of Effectiveness presentation.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Melissa Dickens, Planning Commission staff. Good afternoon. This afternoon, I'll be presenting a holistic view of our 2019 reporting. We're going to be combining the reporting on both the strategic plan and the measures of effectiveness. This is an informational item this afternoon. And before I move into the presentation, wanted to take a couple of moments and thank the key staff that have been involved in putting together this information. Wanted to specifically thank Tatiana Gonzalez. She's here as well. Caroline Charles and Katrina Corcoran for all their work. And the consolidated reporting that you'll be seeing today is because we as staff recognized an opportunity to synthesize the annual reporting that was occurring for the measures of effectiveness and also the strategic plan. It combines these updates that would have been previously shared separately and is evaluated through the lens of the seven strategic priorities that are in your strategic plan. And we think looking at the data this way will enable our agency to provide more detailed information regarding performance and enable us to look at it from a strategic perspective. And I will say that this presentation is primarily going to focus on the highlights. The full information on how we're achieving our strategic objectives, how we're meeting the agency's performance measures is available in the printout that should be in your seats, but I can answer any questions on that as well. A little bit of background about our strategic plan. Excuse me. This was the first strategic plan that was developed jointly by the three boards that Plan Hillsborough staff serve, the Planning Commission, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, and the Hillsborough River Board. It outlines the three-to-five-year or the near-term strategic direction for the agency. And our three boards developed these seven strategic priorities. These strategic priorities really represent the broad range of work that the agency does across teams, across projects. And so these are how our priorities are shaped as part of the strategic plan. Briefly, the measures of effectiveness is an annual evaluation of data and an overview of how we're performing. There are four main goals. They're represented there by the icons on the right of the screen. And the full details on these performance evaluation goals can be found in the appendix on page 14 in your packet. There's additional details about how these goals are calculated and how they're determined. And then, as we are going to be going through this report through the lens of the strategic priorities, you will see these icons up at the top of the screen. So that'll represent how we synthesized both the strategic plan priorities and these measures of effectiveness. So the first strategic priority that I'm going to touch on today is a big one. It encompasses a lot of what we do here at the agency. Of course, land use and transportation are very strongly linked. And so one project that worked on that was an FSU graduate capstone studio project. It was jointly funded with FDOT. And through that project, there were a series of urban design templates and accompanying planning and policy guidance to facilitate shared mobility and autonomous transit services. We also, as part of linking land use and transportation, and this is also a specific goal of work, to develop proactive planning efforts. So in addition to the amendments that you may be seeing coming forward with the city of Tampa, protecting the Tampa Parkland, we're also working on a number of projects proactively behind the scenes. The industrial land study is a big one that's happening right now. And then also, we're kicking off the Plant City mixed-use gateway. So we want to be proactive in our planning efforts and making sure that we are moving these initiatives forward. In terms of performance metrics, a couple of highlights. The local jurisdictions or decision-making bodies agreed with the plan amendment consistency findings approximately 94% of the time. The rezoning consistency agreement rate was roughly the same at 95%. And one important metric is related to a goal that is in our unincorporated Hillsborough comprehensive plan. That goal states that 80% of the development should be occurring within the urban service area. Based on the permitting, trending, and tracking from last year, we are exceeding that goal at 86%. In terms of the technology and innovation strategic priority, there have been a number of enhancements over the past year. The first is we worked to develop a consistent and streamlined user-friendly project template for our website. This enables users to better interact with the content digitally. It also is consistent across projects. And it also enables projects to link to social media, to Google Maps, to email signup forms. So that was a big enhancement that we took on this past year. We've also been working on a number of innovative applications. The TIP Project Viewer is one example. The Comprehensive Plan Update Database. A number of innovative, both GIS-based and database, applications have been occurring. So we continue to use technology to enhance the work that we do. We are also working to ensure that all of our documents are accessible by all and meet ADA compliance standards. So that is something that you'll probably hear about moving forward, but we continue the work on that. And then finally, continuing our internal technology enhancements, we have integrated technology into staff onboarding and also have regular tool-of-the-month presentations at our general staff meetings. This next priority, citizen engagement, is about how do we engage with citizens? This next priority, citizen engagement, is about how do we engage with citizens not only in person, but also using technology to engage with them. And over the past year, we staff attended 120 outreach events and gave 76 presentations. The goal that is set for this performance metrics is 25 presentations, so we exceeded that goal. Some of the highlights from this outreach include the work on the 2020 Census Complete Count Committee, presenting to a number of different groups on that effort. It's Time Hillsborough, which due in part to staff outreach, had approximately 5,000 people participate. And the continued community engagement on Vision Zero, the events like the Walk of Silence, Ride of Silence, the paintings of the crosswalks and the bike lanes, those were all part of our in-person outreach strategy last year. We also had very positive news in terms of customer service surveys. 100% of the surveys returned, rated the agency's overall quality as excellent or good. This is compared to the 90% goal. And we continue to see increasing use of our social media platforms. In 2019, there were over 11,800 followers on Twitter and 2,600 on Facebook. And then one other way that we're trying to engage with citizens is again, making our website more user-friendly. So we instituted an FAQ page for each, for the Planning Commission, the River Board, and the MPO, where the questions that staff receives frequently is ready and available For our planning partnerships strategic priority, we continue to partner with our client governments and also look for new and innovative partnerships. The first partnership that I want to touch on today is Health in All Policies. This is a partnership with the Department of Health. It is a cross-sector collaborative approach that incorporates health into decision-making. There was a resolution of support adopted by the MPO this year and a pending City of Tampa comprehensive plan text amendment. Secondly, we also partnered with a number of radio stations this year, specifically on the It's Time Outreach. There were not only interviews, in-person interviews, but also cross-station promotions. So that was an innovative way that we partnered with them. We continue to partner with USF and the graduate program there with, through the mentor of planning student program, where we partnered, where each, where students are paired with our staff in a year-long mentoring relationship. We also continue to support future leaders in planning, which is a program for high school students to teach them about careers in planning. And then this year, for the first time, we also participated in the Greater Tampa Bay Chambers Civilian Career Day, where we brought in a member of the military who is interested in serving or is interested in pursuing a career in planning. So that was a new partnership this year. And the next strategic priority is enabling transportation choices. The first, It's Time Hillsborough, this was adopted at the MPO public hearing in November of 2019. It is the LRTP, the Long Range Transportation Plan, and details a number of different transportation choices and funding for the next 25 years. The Low Speed Electric Vehicle Study is a unique transportation option. In the city of Temple Terrace, many residents get around using golf carts. And so this study, which was facilitated by the MPO, looked at opportunities for additional access to community amenities and shopping and studied corridors where it might make sense to have additional crossings for golf carts. Additionally, the, the next bullet is related to the work that our land use planners continue to do. So improving connectivity and access is something that's examined as part of their work on the rezonings and the ride-of-way vacations. So they're continually looking to ensure that we're maintaining that connectivity, maintaining that access. We also have a team of staff who are working with the county on their work on the corridor plan update. So continuing to make sure that there will be access and connectivity in the future. Garden Steps is another project by the MPO that continues to enable transportation choices. It seeks to create community gardens with easy bicycle and pedestrian access in identified food deserts. And that did receive the nationwide recognition as part of the Healthiest Cities and Counties Challenge and a $50,000 grant to continue the work related to health equity. Opportunities for regional collaboration is the next strategic priority. This is looking at planning beyond our jurisdictional boundaries. And we continue the work in this area. One significant achievement from the past year is the work with the regional partners to secure approximately 1.4 billion in state and federal funding for the West Shore Interchange. This was an important regional project and was a result of consistent regional messaging. We also continue to collaborate with our regional partners as well as state and national partners for the Safe Routes to School National Conference and the Gulf Coast Safe Streets Summit. Continued to partner with, with our regional collaborators on the Regional Tampa Bay Transportation Pilot Project, received in cooperation with these partners a $250,000 grant to conduct a regional transportation vulnerability analysis. And then the staff continues to support the ongoing regional planning efforts throughout Tampa Bay. This includes supporting the work on various committees and programs of the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, the Agency on Bay Management, and the Regional Resiliency Coalition. And then finally, the final strategic priority is how can we improve the work that we do at Plan Hillsborough? How can we improve Plan Hillsborough as a place to work and ensure that we are improving the work that we produce? The first, you heard from her earlier, we did hire our own in-house human resources staff person. So we have enhanced our capabilities in that regard. She brings specialized functions such as training, recruiting, and employer retention. So we're excited to have her here this year. Succession planning, there were six retirements and 11 new hires in 2019. So this presented a big opportunity for succession planning. Succession planning. And we achieve that through institutional knowledge sharing sessions, cross-department mentorings and trainings, and work to ensure a smooth transition. We also continued our work on a number of internal committees, planning a variety of projects and supporting the agency on a variety of topics. These internal committees include the morale committee, the sustainability committee, and the culture committee. And then as part of enhancing communication, we also put together post-conference information sharing, which when staff attends a conference, they report back and give a presentation on what they learned so that all staff can have access to the best practices, all staff can have access to some of the planning trends, and it's been a great way to share information. And then finally, continue to work on cross-team collaboration. We've accomplished this by instituting cross-team liaisons, also instituting cross-team project And wanted to briefly touch on the work that we'll be doing over the next year to continue to implement the strategic plan. It can, implementation continues to be a focus and a priority for staff. And at our recent staff retreat in December, we brainstormed some new and innovative ways to focus on achieving some of the more complex strategic priorities. So we'll be reporting back to you in a few months on how we're doing there. And we are divided into seven teams that are focused on new methods of implementation for each strategic priority. And this concludes my presentation today. I am available if there are any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from commissioners? Mr. Dowdy?
Thank you, Mr. It's not really a question, more of a comment. And it was just in what you were talking about right at the end there, Melissa, the succession planning. And the previous presentation we had showed 30% of the staff has been here a while, 20, 20 years in that ballpark. So I'm just saying you got your work cut out for you to, to try to maintain that institutional knowledge and keep it going and pass it on to the people that will, will ultimately be replacing all of them. And I think that replacement will also challenge the results of the previous study, just because you're going to have a lot of questions coming up. So I'm just, yeah.
Any other questions? Commissioner Kress?
Just also a comment. That was an impressive list, and y'all are doing a great job.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else before we move on? Actually, I did want to make a comment. I thought the climate survey, going back to the previous presentation, and the fact that 100% participation from the employees was, I thought that was impressive. Okay, no further questions. We'll move on to the-
Thank you.
-City of Temple Terrace Plan Amendment Briefing.
Good afternoon, Mark Hutz and Planning Commission staff. Our staff is processing one plan amendment for the city of Temple Terrace this cycle. It's TTCPA 20-01. This shows you the location of the site in comparison to the current city limits of Temple Terrace. As you can see, it's currently outside. It's being processed currently as a voluntary annexation to bring it within the municipality. And this plan amendment has been applied for in conjunction with that effort. This is a little bit of a zoom in and an aerial of the site that we are studying currently. The plan amendment site is circled by the lavender line. The city Temple Terrace is both to the north and to the west of this site, and those make the connections to bring it into the municipality. It's on the southwest corner of Harney Road and US 301. The uses that predominantly surround this area currently are light industrial, light commercial, public, semi-public, and agriculture. A way of a little bit of background, it is 82.3 acres, therefore it's a regular-scale plan amendment. I've already mentioned it's privately initiated. Its current land use is Hillsborough County Community Mixed Use 12, and the applicant has asked for Temple Terrace Research Corporate Park. And as I mentioned, they are seeking voluntary annexation in conjunction with this plan amendment. This shows you the future land use map as it stands today for both unincorporated county and also city Temple Terrace. And as you can see, the surrounding land use is similar to the land use that exists on-site today, which is both Temple Terrace or Hillsborough County Community Mixed Use If this plan amendment was ultimately approved by Temple Terrace City Council, the color would change to more of this salmon tone, which represents the Temple Terrace Research Corporate Park. So what does that imply as far as the potential impacts or the change of development? Currently, there's almost entitlements on the site for almost 1,000 units of residential. The Temple Terrace Research Corporate Park does not allow residential development, so those entitlements would disappear. The current FAR for community mixed use 12 in the county is .5. The Temple Terrace Research Corporate Park is 1. Therefore, the non-residential development could increase from basically 1.7 million square feet of non-residential uses to 3.5 million square feet of non-residential uses. We are working on our staff report and our analysis. We prepare to come back to present those to you on March 9th, a public hearing at this location and in the evening. We expect the transmittal hearing to take place on April 7th in front of Temple Terrace City Council. And if the city council show chooses to send it to DA for their review and come back for an adoption hearing, we expect that to be in the month of May or June of 2020. Chairman, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from commissioners? Okay, no questions from commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will move on to the county planning workshop synopsis. Synopsis.
Good afternoon, Melissa Zornita, Executive Director. So over the last, over the last two months, we've had four workshops with the Board of County Commissioners that have covered a wide breadth of topics, many of which relate to ultimately the update of the county's comprehensive plan. So what I thought, as we concluded the fourth one of them last Thursday, I thought I would try to give you a synopsis of what we've covered, and we have a little time this afternoon. So this is, this is a little lengthy, but I'll try, hopefully it'll be interesting to you all. What we started out with in December was framing up the issues that we had been hearing from the Board of County Commissioners. So they had been saying different things at land use meetings when they talked about zonings or at plan amendment hearings. We'd had some previous workshops with them. And we tried to think through all of the things that they were talking about and put them into this matrix. And that was provided to you all in advance. And the, the goal, overarching goal being ensuring quality of life and place-making in the built environment and dividing, looking at that through three lenses of different types of sustainability, environmental sustainability, economic sustainability, and social sustainability. And then kind of crossing with that in the, in the rows are financial policies, land use policies, and infrastructure policies. Ultimately, what I think we got to are nine goals in the, in the matrix. And, and as you'll see as we progress, we start to flesh these out, what they mean and what some of the different initiatives that might be undertaken as it relates to each of these. So we started with that workshop. In the very first workshop, I provided the agenda because you'll see there was a whole lot that was discussed about financial policy and different fees, and that is not my area of expertise. So I'm not going to go in-depth on stormwater impact fees or, or school impact fees because that will, is beyond my scope of knowledge. I, I heard the whole workshop, but you would be better served if you want to understand any of the studies that they looked at in terms of the fees that they were talking about increasing, hearing directly from the county staff. But they did have an overall discussion about the county's budget and how it relates to growth. The general fund, as it says here, remains under stress, and they've been having a lot of discussion about that through their budget workshops process. As we all know, one of the challenges has been a lack of dedicated funding for transportation. And we're still all awaiting the outcome of the transportation surtax decision. There is a lot of deficiencies in our current infrastructure and services that need to be rectified, and those cannot be made up with by impact fee increases. Those impact fees go towards new infrastructure, not towards fixing the deficiencies of the past. It also cannot go towards operating costs. So that sets out that those costs have to come from something else. Our deficiencies in our operating dollars have to come from another source. And a lot of that has been, over the recent years, through the increases in property taxes and sales tax revenues that have come from new growth. So new growth is an important driver to the county's budget. And so you have to balance that. You can't have it all from fees because we also have some of the budget coming from new ad valorem. Go ahead.
Can we ask questions?
Absolutely.
What exactly is preventing money, money from being spent on operating costs? Because I, I understand there's other counties, for instance, I think it's Broward that does allow it. Do you, do you know the answer to that?
I don't. I believe it is a legal issue with, and maybe how, either how it's constructed or I will get an answer. That's the better thing for me to say, rather than making assumptions about why it's not impact fee. So specifically, the question is why is impact fee dollars not used, allowed to be used for operating? I will find out.
And if the county commissioners are in a, if they're in a position of authority to change that, then maybe they should. I don't know if anyone else knows the answer.
I'll find out.
Thanks.
As I said, this part of the presentation was less my area of expertise-
It's fine if you don't know.
Than the others. Yeah.
Seems relevant.
Sure, absolutely. So they spent much of that- So they spent much of that first workshop going through a number of the fees and the potential increases that they are looking at. And there are many. The second workshop that we had was on January 9th, and this one was my area of expertise because it was land use policy. So we were focused on that second row of the matrix. And we spent a good bit of time talking about some of the development trends. And I actually will, am going to integrate some of the slides that we were asked to bring back at the third workshop because I felt like they really fit well here. We talked first about, this map shows you the urban service area. And everything that is purple is built out. So about 174,000 acres or 80% of the land in the urban service area is currently built on or preserved for ELAP or some sort of transportation right of way, that sort of thing. And again, this is all unincorporated focused. Then when you look at what is approved and not built, you start to see some of these darker purple areas. Those are things that are somewhere in the development pipeline. And that includes about 34,000 residential units that are approved but not yet built in the urban service area. And then when you look at the areas that are unbuilt, those are areas that don't have, they're not in the approval process somewhere for site development or something other than that, you see those turquoise parcels start to pop up. It's about 22,600 acres that are unbuilt. That's not a lot of land in the urban service area. So what we also looked at were some of the comparison of how we have built in terms of densities. And this was some work that our consultant, that helped us on the allocation of population and employment projections. They looked at some of these trends and they looked at all four jurisdictions. And across the board, we're not developing at the densities that our comprehensive plan allows. So our future land use categories in the City of Tampa, on average, have a density of 19 units per acre, and we're developing it, we've developed it about five. And the unincorporated area, 6.9 is the average on the future land use map, and we've developed it about three. And this map simply shows, this is what's allowed. So the colors are darker on this map compared to the actual. And you can see the colors a lot less. Some of the areas that are grayed out are industrial areas, and they don't have residential density like MacDill Air Force Base, even though there are people who live there, they're not, it's not calculated in terms of density.
I just, I could just underscore that. I looked at this in advance and found that, I don't know if shocking is the right word, but you know, when we're talking about linking land use and transportation, just as one example, to leave that much density on the table, and how can we help get the public from understanding that more people doesn't always have to mean more cars? And it's really about the way that you design, you know, the multi-story or what have you. But that's a key opportunity, in my opinion.
Absolutely. One of the pieces that we were asked to bring back a look at was, starting in 2008, the unincorporated counties comprehensive plan had a policy instituted about minimum densities. And that called for that new residential rezonings would come in at at least 75% of the density of the land use category. So if it's a four unit per acre category, they have to come in at at least three units per acre. And we found that the vast majority of the rezonings in the last year, that was in the timeframe we were able to take a look at, did meet the minimum density. We're going to go back further, and that's part of the, ultimately, the work products that we've said we would bring back to the board as a result of all of this, is a further analysis of that and to see where has that maybe, has that gone awry somewhere after the rezoning process that we don't, we don't look at things once they get into site development or plating? There are a whole host of issues, maybe environmental issues, stormwater issues, that may change how many units people, they may start out asking for three units per acre and end up at something like 2.7. So what's driving that? We want to do some more analysis on that issue. But there's not a minimum density requirement in the City of Tampa today or in any of, either of the other cities.
Just to take that a step further, it might be interesting to get some other kind of peer cities and understand what, you know, what kind of densities they're building at. Maybe some workshops are needed, maybe partnering with the Urban Land Institute, I don't know, but just help locally educate our developers and neighbors who come out to oppose projects.
Yes. Yeah, I think it's both sides of the coin there, definitely. Yeah.
I'll let you finish, but I want to come back and tag team a little bit with the comments that Commissioner Kress is talking about. But go ahead and finish, you know.
Okay, I've got a lot of slides.
I did want to raise just one point. Have we considered that maybe the comp plan is wrong?
Certainly. That is, one of the discussion points is whether or not maybe we have allocated or thought there would be too much density in some of these areas. So do we need to look at that differently? Absolutely. The next, we did a similar comparison on Flory area ratio. And again, the lowest Flory area ratio that we have as a maximum in any of the comp plans is a .25 Flory area ratio. And we are not achieving that in any of our jurisdictions. So and that is telling us that something else is driving how people are developing, whether it is that the parking standards, the stormwater standards, construction standards that people don't want to go vertical. There are a whole number of things there that we can look at in more depth. But this map, again, most of the land use categories, particularly in the unincorporated area, have a maximum of a .25 Flory area ratio. And we're not, we're well below what is permitted. So this just sort of highlights some of the trends that we need to be aware of as we start to look at our projected population going forward and how we're going to develop in the future. And opportunities to consider whether or not changes are warranted at different points in the process. So over the last 10 years, on average, we've been adding about 23,000 people per year. Obviously, that was lower in the recession years and as high as 36,000 between 2018 and 2019. So if we were to continue to build in that, on that average, on that trend, we would arrive at the statistic we've been saying of by 2045 needing, growing by about 600,000 more people, being over 2 million in population. The state does call for us to at least plan for a 10-year horizon, and they call for using the projections that we have been using, the Bureau of Economic and Business Research. But there was some discussion with the board about what we should be using, so we clarified that. This is what the projections, the, from the Bureau of Economic and Business Research are, just over 2 million in population in 2045. Again, if we were to continue to build the way that we have been building, we would be reaching a buildout of the urban service area and the cities around 2035. But the information that we got from the It's Time Hillsborough Survey and Imagine 2040 before that have been consistent that people would like to see us change how we have built and how we continue to develop. They would like to see us focus growth in the urban service area and begin to have some transit oriented development. But that takes an investment in the transit piece to do that. Right. That's okay. So this is, this is the allocation generally of population and employment going forward that we utilize as the underpinning of the long-range transportation plan. That is not, this, this map or any of the subsequent ones of the allocation are not something that are adopted. They're something that are reflective of the policy direction that we understand at the time and are something that can change. And that's why we update those numbers at least every five years to reflect different trends and different changes that we face. In this scenario, what we looked at was some growth happening along the I-4 corridor. Obviously, the transit oriented development makes these areas sort of the brighter blue. Some redevelopment in areas like Brandon and around the university. Development of the RP2 in the Wy Mama area, which is something that is under discussion right now, but we looked at that as developing at the two units per acre that it's approved for. And then Plant City expanding in the Northeast Master Plan and south of, down along County Line Road in particular. That's, this is what that looks like in a little bit more depth with more granularity to, based on traffic analysis zones. Inside the urban service area, we would have greenfield growth. So that means it's not, there's not something there today. It of about 200,000 people, redevelopment of about 80,000 people. And then growth again along Plant City, I-4, and the RP2 area. And then the rural area would continue to have growth of rural scale, one unit, one unit to five acre growth. The employment is a little bit harder to see because the employment is focused heavily in downtown, West Shore, and the university area, as well as some of those transit oriented development stations. But there is some employment growth along the I-75 corridor and I-4 corridors here and a small amount in South County. Then because we were very unincorporated focused for this series of workshops, we took a look at the breakdown of population, dwelling units, and employment, whether they were in greenfield areas versus redevelopment areas to get a scale of just that unincorporated growth. We took a look at then the rural area, how much of that growth was going into expansion areas versus just rural scale growth. And then we took a look at what that translated into in terms of dwelling units per acre. Keeping in mind where we were on average in dwelling units per acre inside the urban service area, this scenario would be a density of, on average, 4.87 in greenfield areas. Redevelopment areas would be over nine units per acre. Outside the urban service area, just under one unit per acre in the rural component. But in the expansion areas, we'd be looking at a density of about 3.8 units per acre. So on a whole, all of our scenario is saying we're going to develop going forward at higher density than we have been in the past. And I think that's a question of how we're going to do that in the unincorporated area. What's the policy, the infrastructure, the fiscal implications of all of that? And is that something that the community wants? Then they asked us to drill down into different subareas. These are really hard to see on the screen, so I will send a link to all of this so that you can take a look at it and drill down in more depth. The main thing to see here is in terms of population growth, you can see South County has a huge amount of new growth compared to existing. Similarly, Gibsonton and Riverview downtown also has a lot of residential growth compared to the existing. But those are some of the big areas. Plant City as well has a good chunk and Brandon also. Then in terms of, there are similar slides in terms of employment. And here, again, you see downtown, West Shore, Brandon, kind of jumping out as some of the bigger areas for future growth. So what we spent the rest of this workshop and the, actually, the two workshops going over were different approaches we could do to change how we grow, change our approach on infrastructure. And all of these end up getting synthesized in a document that's at your seat that says Board of County Commissioners Workshop Policy Synthesis. So you have about five pages of all of this compiled. And as I look at it, this is becoming sort of our marching orders for how we're going to update the plan, what types of policies we're going to look at, how we're going to, there are different things that might apply to the land development code or technical manuals that are more county administration focused. But this is laying out basically the policy direction that the VOCC wants to proceed on. So I'm just going to try and cover these kind of quickly. They want to look at increasing the acreage of natural preservation lands, continuing to protect water quality, environmental quality from degradation by development, looking at the interconnectedness of water resources through a one-water approach, and looking at opportunities in the land and water management process to enhance those areas. They shared a map of the environmental lands acquisition, things that are acquired or goals to be acquired. And you can start to see how many of these begin to interconnect. This was, I think, similar from Ross's presentation, Mr. Dickerson's presentation, I think that was last month at the.
Yeah, I was going to ask about that. I didn't, I didn't notice any kind of similar map before this. And I just wondered if it would be striking to see kind of how much green space or open space that we've lost for development.
Like historically?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Whatever you can to kind of just underscore the point that the ELAP program has to be successful in order for these wildlife corridors, water quality, all those kinds of things.
Yeah, that's a good idea. The next area was looking at maximizing infrastructure. And as we discussed, we've been exceeding our goals. Over the last 10 years, we've had 90% of growth within the urban service area. That's what's making that land in the urban service area increasingly sparse. And so if we want to continue to accommodate our growing population in the urban service area, we might need to look at some different policies to try to maximize utilization of densities, look at transfer of development rights potentially, that's something the board is very interested in, seeing if there is a way to make that work, to transfer some of the rights from the rural area into the urban service area. And then look at creative solutions to increasing demands such as green infrastructure, low impact development, and other things like that that might reduce the impact on the environment of the growth. In the area of land use and economic sustainability, the focus was primarily on how to develop at nodes, whether they are transit oriented development or mixed use activity centers in the urban, within the urban service area, in the unincorporated area, trying to reduce trip lengths and provide more uses close together, as well as try to utilize those as a focus for affordable housing. So we just had a couple of slides that showed if we had transit oriented development in some of these areas along some fixed guideway transit, we could accommodate one out of four new residents and one out of three new jobs in the transit oriented development. Of course, it still takes the transit part of it to get there. But yeah, but we have been studying with the county, trying to focus on some nodes within the Brandon area. You all have, I think, seen the study in the past where we looked at the different corridors and opportunities to create some more dense activity centers. And the areas that the community said they really wanted to see that were focused up closer to State Road 60, which presents potentially the opportunity to connect that with some more rapid transit in that area. And then there are a number of nodes that have been identified, either through, they are what we've called in the past key economic spaces, areas where there's a higher propensity of jobs in our community. Or the blue dots are areas that were identified through the community planning process where the community sees that there is a historic or an older place that they would like to enhance, downtown Riverview or downtown Ruskin. It's been their historic heart of their community, and there may be opportunities to improve the mix of uses and the connectivity in those areas to make them more vibrant places in our suburban area. improve the mix of uses and the connectivity in those areas to make them more vibrant places in our suburban area. In terms of fiscal sustainability, this really focused on trying to preserve the lands that we have available for economic development. So whether that's areas that are designated for industrial or office uses and also try to increase the supply of those particularly in areas where people are living far from where they work. So the example, the prime example of that is South County. A lot of people who live down there have long commute times because they have to commute to Brandon or MacDill or downtown or USF because there's not really an employment center in South County. So is there the opportunity to, at the very least, preserve the land for that until the market kind of catches up with the residential development down there? So the, and here's the slide that shows the jobs, housing imbalance and the the darker the color, the red and the orange are those who have, I believe it's forty minutes or longer of a commute to their job. So they, these areas in South County in particular, the yellow is thirty minutes or longer. So obviously they're driving further and that's something that has an infrastructure impact of the fact that there's not a lot of employment to keeping up with the residential development that's occurring down there. And these are the sites that the county has identified are developments that have current entitlements of industrial or office employment types of uses that are vacant or have ability for more future growth that they would like to hold on to. And then the counties also continues to discuss strategic expansion along the I four corridor. The Urban Land Institute did a study. It might be going on three years ago now that identified three nodes along the I four corridor. Our red outline kind of covers all of them. It was not a swath like that, but it was three, three nodes in that area that could be mixed use, have employment and some higher density residential. And as we look at land use and social sustainability, this really focused on preserving the choice of lifestyles, so maintaining agriculture. This is just a map from our east rural agricultural study that looked at where there's agricultural zoning still in the east county area. But trying to ensure that we still have market viability of agricultural uses and then many of those rural areas want to still see some rural style design. Looking at form based development, mixed use town centers, having a diversity of policies to, as opposed to a one size fits all approach. And then this area, we talked about redevelopment and looking at public private partnerships and opportunities to enhance the use of underutilized land and buildings within our urban service area. And this was a map that our consultant looked at ideas, areas that simply had a building to land value ratio that might make them have potential for redevelopment. The county wants to consider incorporating a health and all policies approach into their work as well. And preserving historic, cultural and recreational assets. So this was a map of areas, communities of concern that the MPO utilizes based on these areas having I believe it's two or more demographics that are socio-economic demographics that would indicate there's some concern in those areas. And then lastly, there's a very big push in this regard towards affordable housing in looking at the land development regulations for greater flexibility. Density bonuses, infrastructure improvements in those areas. There are areas in the university area, for example, that are still on septic tanks, but would be great locations for affordable housings because they have such great access to transportation. So that covered workshop two. Workshop, I've tried to go as fast as I can. Where there's a lot, a lot of really good information. I want you all to be up to speed on it because this is all going to ultimately end up coming back to you all in some fashion. So this, the third workshop looked at infrastructure policies. And in this regard, looking at opportunities to limit new septic tanks in the urban service area and ways to get people to convert off of those septic tanks. Looking at minimizing infrastructure in high hazard coastal hazard area. Focusing on mixed use activity centers would continue to reduce our transportation impacts and making sure that we incorporate looking at wildlife and wildlife corridors in our infrastructure investments. And this is just a map representative of how they are starting to look at the areas for septic tank conversions. This is showing you the Brandon area and it was kind of shocking to me how much of that area was on septic tank historically. So there's a lot of work to be done if we want to move those areas off of that. In terms of economic sustainability, trying to direct infrastructure investment into targeted nodes that can support redevelopment and mixed use. Looking at better connectivity and trying to reconnect the grid or enhance the grid pattern so that people don't have to get in their cars for every trip. And looking at creating additional mobility opportunities. Again, one of the ideas, this better shows the three nodes that the Urban Land Institute looked at along the I four corridor as having potential for, for new growth in a strategic way. And then lastly, infrastructure as it relates to social sustainability focused a lot on safety and incorporating their vision zero approach into context sensitive roadway design. Looking at bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure, trails. Basically improved transit service. All of the good stuff that we talk about in terms of multimodal transportation sort of fell under this section. And these were three examples of affordable housing projects that they were looking at. And that they were starting to look at them in proximity to what community uses were nearby, what the transportation network was. Was just a new lens that they were starting to apply to looking at the affordable housing opportunities. So all of those three workshops arrived us at this policy synthesis that you have, and I'm not going to read it to you all. You'll get to take it home and digest it further. But what we did after that was we took and said, okay, these are the things that we think we're going to do based on all of this. And so at the back of that policy synthesis, you will have the county's twelve month work program. I'm not going to go over that because I don't want to speak to their projects. But I will go over what I have said that we will be doing in the next 12 months to move these issues forward. The first thing is we have been asked to do some countywide outreach on this policy direction and this framework that they have laid out. As part of that, they also have asked that we conduct a joint meeting with the cities on growth. Because a lot of these issues, while we focused on them in an unincorporated area, really have a lot of impact on the city of Tampa, Plant City, Temple Terrace. Because if, if you contract one area, the balloon goes somewhere else. We have begun the RP two land use study in the Wy Mama Village and Wy Mama Community Plan Update. We have been working with the county's Economic Development Department on a set of policies to try to retain those competitive sites as well as provide some incentives for folks who create new job creation land uses. Sean College has been managing for the county, a community vulnerability study that we had a workshop with Taryn Sabian a couple of months ago. And that is, should be completed this year. We have been working with a number of county departments on a set of plan amendments to update the stormwater, potable water, wastewater elements, as well as components of the conservation and coastal management elements into one component of the comprehensive plan called One Water. And we believe that we'll be able to initiate those plan amendments later this year. We have been working with the city of Tampa and the county and Hart on a TOD station area planning grant that Hart got. So we'll continue to do that. The, we are underway on a community profile in Gibsonton. And that should be completed in the next few months. As the county will be the lead on any work on transfer development rights, but if there there's a whole section in the future land use element right now about transfer development rights that would need to be updated with plan amendments to reflect whatever direction the county goes in that regard. We've been working on an update for the housing element. And that would probably include relooking at the affordable housing density bonus. We could bring forward those plan amendments before the end of the year. The MPO has received some money from the county to look at eight of the high crash corridors for some vision zero quick fix safety improvements. And as part of that, we have some land use planners assigned to work with them to look at the land use context in those areas to make sure as they make those recommendations, they're thinking about the future development along those corridors, not just the present. We're going to continue looking at the minimum density policy analysis. We're also going to look to see if there are any opportunities to increase our connectivity policies or improve upon them. We've got in the, we've been working on updates to the conservation elements, solid waste element and coastal management elements. We would be working with the county on what other, other updates to the land use and transportation elements are needed. And as the county starts to flesh out a redevelopment policy related to those nodes, particularly in Brandon and I four, that would predictably need some update to the policies and the comprehensive plan to reflect those. So that's a tall order, but I think we've got a lot of great folks who are working on all of those items. Lastly, I just want to cover two other quick things so that you all are aware of them. So some of this is kind of merging into my executive director's report here too. The community outreach that we have been asked to do, we have been talking with a consultant HCP who has, they are a PR and marketing firm. They did a quality of life survey with the county over the summer and based on that basis, they are well positioned to probe deeper into some of those issues that they've already looked at. Based on what we've heard from the Board of County Commissioners, we're going to focus on a two pronged approach that is focused on public sentiment on growth issues in the unincorporated area. One of the pieces that are It's Time Hillsborough Survey and Imagine 2040 before that looked countywide and was some, while you could parse by zip code, if people provided their zip code, you weren't able to truly segregate which was the unincorporated versus the city input. So they've asked for a statistically significant survey of the unincorporated area that would be a phone survey of registered voters, random sample. And then pairing that with some focus groups that would delve deeper into these issues. They also would be random sample from the unincorporated area, but it would give the opportunity to really get into some of the qualitative feedback about how people were feeling about not just growth and how things are going, but also some of these strategies and if they were employed. And the timeline is rather aggressive in getting that all done by the end of May. But I think we've got a good plan to do it. And then we further would have more specific outreach on policy issues if we would engage with stakeholders on One Water before we bring forward those plan amendments, for example, we would, as we were looking at RP two in the Wy Mama Village, we also have specific stakeholder input on those areas. And I briefed the board on these efforts as well and some of the staff will be back before you in March to give you a more in-depth discussion of what we're doing in Wy Mama and the RP two areas. Because I want you all to be again, up to speed. These are going to, these two areas are moving quickly because the moratorium that was put in place by the Board of County Commissioners ends at the end of August, early September. And so we have to get moving on the outreach and get some input on recommendations. We have begun the real estate and market analysis through the consultant that you all approved. I think that was December. And we are working on a kickoff meeting for both communities in beginning of March followed by a charrette process being used in each area to arrive at the recommendations. We, they, we will be notifying all the property owners who are potentially impacted through mailed notice as well as signs and things like that. So we really want to get the word out on those studies as they will potentially have recommendations that impact the people's, people's use of their property. Ultimately, then there will be plan amendment and land development code hearings as well. So that covers everything that was covered at the four workshops so far, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Commissioner Powell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Great presentation. I have a few questions.
Sure.
The one slide, actually, I don't know if we can get a copy of your slides.
Absolutely, yes.
That was like really great information.
Yeah.
But one thing that really struck me was you said that 80% of our lands within the urban service area are already, you know, dedicated for development. And does that include like all of our industrial land and commercial and all that together?
It does.
So with only having 20% left, you know, at what point are we obligated to think about, and this is probably the worst thing ever, but you know, going outside of the urban service area, like when do you have to expand that? I mean, we're, you know, we only, we have such a little bit left. I mean, are we obligated at some point, hey, we have to do this even if it's against, you know, popular opinion and because then you get into urban sprawl and you have to be sensitive to that.
What I would say is that I believe that, and this is the same thing I told the Board of County Commissioners last week, I believe that the policies that they're laying out here do begin to contemplate some strategic expansions. They're starting to look at I four and expansion along that area. And they've asked us to look at the RP two and the Wy Mama areas, both of which are outside the urban service area. Now, the results and recommendations from those outreach efforts are still a few months away. But I think that, that's important information to understand how much growth really could be accommodated in these two areas. And then the county is starting to look as part of their work program. They are going to start to environmental and infrastructure analysis as well as a development feasibility within the three nodes on the I four quarter. Again, to be able to understand how much could be accommodated in those areas, what might be realistic and what might be some of the costs of infrastructure improvements that would be needed to have that development out there as well. So I think those are important pieces to understanding and starting to contemplate growth in those areas.
And then my last question, have we ever or ever thought about like sitting down with developers and saying, hey, why do you develop? You know, you know, in this way, what can be done in order, you know, from a policy perspective to allow you to, you know, get to like the maximum densities that are allowed? Because just with a little bit of development work that I do in my business, you know, I see a lot of problems and challenges, you know, in terms of, you know, setback requirements and this, you know, the lot sizes and, you know, where they just can't achieve it. You know, I mean, developers love to achieve, you know, the maximum density because the more lots that they can sell, you know, the better, but they're also confined and then to certain sizes and then, you know, you factor in your stormwater and you factor in your roads and things like that. Maybe you get, you know, you're allowed four units per acre, but sometimes you're lucky to get two.
Yeah.
You know, and so all those things are taken out. So if we want to reach that potential of maximum densities, I think we're going to have to look at, hey, are we going to, you know, figure out how to cut these, you know, lot sizes up or, you know, get creative and allowing that. And I know there's been comments, you know, at land use meetings from commissioners where, hey, well, why are we allowing, you know, someone to get to a maximum density and, you know, well, we're not even really there totally. So I don't know if that's, you know, if we ever thought about sitting down with them, you know, as a round table and inviting them and trying you know, as a round table and inviting them and trying to, it's not like, you know, just trying to work with them to, you know, because it's so capital intensive to do development, you know? You don't get a loan for that stuff, you know, it's all that's paid for out of pocket first and then they recoup on the backend.
Yeah, absolutely. We have historically had a number of conversations with the development community and will continue to. Actually, one of the people I met with at the end of January was Jennifer Mott Sanger from the Tampa Bay Builders Association and asked her when I could come and speak with their group again this spring to get some input and feedback from them on the results of all of this. So I think we're looking at a date in March for that. But absolutely would, if we, however we need to structure that, would welcome that. I know that historically we have heard about things like stormwater and just what you mentioned, stormwater, roads, parking, things like that eating up a lot of the site, that it's not even, that they don't, they just physically can't.
Right.
Fit more on the property. And, and we want them to preserve the wetlands and we want them to provide open space. We've got a lot of, a wishlist of a lot of things that we want them to do, and that's hard to achieve all on one piece of property. So I think that's some of the things that we need to look at to see how we can better maximize the use of our land. Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Melissa, my comments and questions are sort of similar to the issues that Commissioner Kress brought up as well. But I want to go back to your, your original matrix because as you were describing how this, how you got to this point or how, how you sort of, in the workshop, sort of arrived at conclusions or summaries with the Board of County Commissioners. I sort of questioned, there's one, one aspect of the matrix that I was sort of questioning because the matrix is entitled ensuring quality of life and place making in the built environment. But you've got three, three broad categories, environmental, economic, and social sustainability. But the one I'm missing, and again, I know, I realize this sort of gets down to, to the local jurisdictions as well, or the other jurisdictions, I say, I should say, which is sustainable, sustainable urban and community design. Because a lot of the issues that you touched on in your explanation about, in each of these categories, really come down to that level. The statistics, you know, the graphs and the charts were fine. They give us this, this broad, well, let's say, maybe not a 10,000 square foot sort of overview of things. But when you start talking about densities, you start, start talking about development patterns, things like that, ultimately, you're talking about community, community design. That's what people sort of see, they, they, they recognize, they understand it. Well, maybe they do, but they, they form it, quickly form an opinion. They like it or they don't. Okay? And I think one of the things that, that I've noticed a lot of, a lot of communities in, in other, in other cities are doing, they're, they're, they're promoting, obviously, they're promoting higher densities for the same reasons that we are, of course. But they're, they, they've initiated campaigns, let's say, to sort of, in outreach efforts or whatever, to sort of help people understand, well, what does density look like? Okay? You had one chart that had the bar scale, when we're talking about how developers are not building to the allowable density. That was one that, that when I saw that, I think you were also sort of, sort of surprised or shocked, that all of those levels are suburban densities. Okay? And anything under 12, you know, 14 units per acre, that's, that's, that's a typical single-family type of density, let's say. Now, I fully understand that we, we do have pockets of higher density, and that's, that's the, that's the other portion of this, I think, that needs to be, needs to be understood also. We are seeing higher densities in certain areas. You had a, you had one of your maps that sort of showed that.
Yeah.
You know, where that's, where that's occurring. But I still think what's missing is, well, what does it look like? Okay? In other words, how do we help people visualize density? Okay? We, we talk about it all the time. Some people hate it, others say, well, we need it. Okay? But nobody's, no, no, seems to know, well, what does it actually look like? Okay? And I'm raising this issue particularly because, again, you were talking about the relationships, you know, of course, with, with transportation and how, how we're, we're continuing efforts, let's say, you know, to, to align our land use policies and, and transportation policies, let's say. And I think it's, it's really important for people to understand, okay, at the, at the densities that we're, that we're building at, yes, it is going to be hard to support, support transit unless we, we have those, those dense sort of nodes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Or areas, let's say. But, but I just think that, that we need to, we need to help people sort of understand what that looks like.
Yeah.
My other point was, you said something that, I'm not sure if it was in your, in one of your, your, your charts or, or graphs, but you said, and I know I get this wrong, one out of four, with, with, with transit or, with transit oriented development, one out of four, we can, we can accommodate.
We can accommodate one out of four new residents.
Residents.
And one out of three new jobs.
Within the urban service area.
Within the transit oriented development station areas.
Okay.
If we connected downtown, I mean, USF downtown west shore and connected over to Brandon, within those station areas, we would, could accommodate that much.
That, with that statistic, and with the other chart that you showed with this, this ascending sort of population growth in Hillsborough County, I think we need to talk about, well, where does, where do those trends actually meet? Okay? Where do they overlap? Because they, they have to at some point, okay? Or else people are going to be asking, well, how are we going to stuff, how many, 600,000 new people in, in the Hillsborough County?
Yeah. Well, and that's, that statistic is based on a big assumption, which is that we're going to have fixed guideway transit.
But even without that.
Right. Without that, we're still going to have that many people.
Right.
But the ability to accommodate more of them in station areas is dependent on having the transit to have station areas around.
Okay.
So that, that really, that's a big assumption on our part, that between now and 2045, we're going to have that and that that will be able to be a factor in changing our development pattern. If that doesn't come to fruition, we're, yes, going to have a different, a different, it's, yeah.
A different problem.
Yeah, a different problem. That's a good way of saying it.
A bigger problem.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. But, but that's why I was, I was, because again, you know, this is, this is very, very comprehensive and in-depth, but I started to get the sense that, you know, it's still sort of at this, at this level and, and some, some aspects of this, you know, sort of have to come down to the, you know, to, you know, to, well, to the human scale level, so to speak.
Absolutely. Yes, it will.
Okay. But good. I mean, thorough, you know, thorough study, you know, nevertheless, but, but those are just my initial observations.
Sure.
I think as Commissioner Powell asked if we could all get a copy of that.
Yes.
Because I think once we have time to, you know, review it in detail, I'm sure we'll have additional questions.
Yeah. What I'll do is I'll provide you with all four of the presentations that were made. Then you'll get the full, this financial piece, too, that I did not cover, because that's some of the slides that I've sort of hidden here, because.
Okay. Commissioner Joseph?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's not a question, just, I guess a quandary, just, I'm working through it in my head still, but the general fund is under stress, we need transportation options, infrastructure's under stress, our schools are under stress, we are not currently developing to our projections that we projected years ago, and we're sitting here saying the answer is to drive more density into these areas we're having all these troubles with, based on projections we made decades ago. It seems a little strange to me. But again, I'm still working all this out in my head, and I'm sure we'll talk about this more, so.
Well, I think one of the, the ideas is, is could we potentially utilize the existing infrastructure better? But certainly there are deficiencies in many of those areas that have to be rectified and it, there's a finite amount of resources, and it would shift resources potentially from outward areas to some of these inward areas. That's why we need to get input from the larger community on this issue and why, I mean, ultimately, these decisions get made by the elected officials.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. And now we'll move on to our executive director's report.
Okay. Thank you. So on the executive director's report, you will see a lot of the meetings have related to this series of workshops and, or some of the projects that I covered that we are working on, because we did have a community meeting on the Gibsonton community character profile, as well as some stakeholder interviews on the Wy Mama and the RP2 studies. I did want to touch on a couple of things. In terms of the contracts, there are several things that we're working on. For the Wy Mama Village and, and Wy Mama Community Plan Update, we have been working through the county. They have a blanket contract with the University of South Florida, and we would be procuring a consultant through the Department of Architect, Community Design, and I've messed up the name.
Florida Center.
Florida Center. There you go. That one. It is. So we're working with Terrance Sabia, again, from that group on that Wy Mama contract, but going through the county's blanket contract, much like we use their blanket procurement for our copiers, sort of a similar thing, we just put in a requisition for that. That study would be about $75,000. So I wanted to be very clear and transparent about all contracting issues. The, right, right.
Microphone, please. Please turn on your microphone.
So the RP2 land use study, we are partnering with the county and splitting the cost of that in half. It would be about $100,000. The county development services department is utilizing their procurement processes to acquire a consultant for that study. And then, as I mentioned, we have been talking with the company, HCP, on the outreach. That is something that, since the county has requested it, they will be procuring the, the contract with HCP, and we would be managing that project for, on their behalf, kind of like Sean is managing the community vulnerability study for them. The Planning Commission Retreat is Thursday at the Pearl at, we'll have lunch starting at noon, and the Pearl is near Armature Works. And at your seat, there is a schematic of the apartment, the Pearl Apartments. And Mr. Garcia has written on there some instructions that you park across Palm Avenue from the Pearl at, in one of the Armature Works surface lots. You come in past an Italian restaurant into a gate, there's going to be signs, and you'll go up to the penthouse community room, where we've been very fortunate that past Planning Commissioner Bowen Arnold has secured us a very lovely space to have the retreat. We'll have lunch starting at noon. Our program will start about 12:30, and Mr. Robbins is going to go over some nuts and bolts of Sunshine Law, Public Records, all that sort of good stuff. We'll take a break about 1:45, and I've asked a number of other staff people to come and join us for the, from 2:00 to 4:00 o'clock to have some discussion about how we can build better relationships with the community and our elected officials. So that is the idea of the agenda. We should be done by 4:00 o'clock, so. Also, at your seats, you have a save the date for the Planning and Design Awards. We have gotten the date confirmed with the Straz Center for that at the end of October. And also at your seats, I received an email invitation from former Planning Commissioner Hung Mai, offering an invitation for us to attend a Port Tampa Bay Harbor tour. It's about an hour and 30 minutes, and he asked that I share the invitation at this meeting and get some sense of who would be interested in participating in such a tour, and then we can work on scheduling for those who are interested and, and available. So please let me know if, at the break, if you would be interested in participating in the port tour, and we'll work on scheduling that from there.
For those of you who haven't done that, it's, it's a good tour, you know, a good opportunity to see what's going on down there, so.
Is it, is it just covering, is it their normal tour or is it kind of a glimpse into their master plan and how that's going or, do you know what the, their intent is?
I think their intent is just to offer an overview, but my experience, when I, I went on a tour that they offered as part of the FLYP program last year, they, the staff is very knowledgeable, and if there are questions about the master plan or other aspects, they were all able to cover it all. And what he describes here is a briefing in the office and then the boat tour.
Okay.
So, sure. That concludes my report.
Okay. Any questions for Melissa? Any questions? No questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to other business. First item, chair's business. I don't have anything to add, so I'll move to old business. Any old business? No old business? Any new business? Any committee reports? Commissioner Powell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Affordable Housing Board met today. Happy to report, you know, Commissioner Dix was concerned about our quorum last time that has been resolved. And then some new language has been proposed for those issues. You know, you must have excused absences, and after so many, you will be flogged at dawn. And other items that came up, we're talking about the Sodowsky Trust and the initial budgets that have come out of the legislature. The governor, of course, he has requested, I think for the second or third year now, for full funding of the Sodowsky Trust. The Senate put out their own budget, and they also had in full funding of the trust. However, the House budget did not. It did include a sweep, not a full sweep, but, you know, still a decent amount, like, I think it was like 61%. So instead of the 387 million that should be appropriated, we're looking at around, it was 160 million, something like that of, you know, getting appropriated. Didn't think about it at the time, but I wish I would have asked, you know, how was that in relation to, you know, last year? I don't know if we're getting anything more or less, but, you know, obviously.
Are we getting more?
I, I think that we were, but I, I don't know. So everyone has been asked to, you know, actually, the people that are in charge of that are the Republican representatives, you know, asking them to, you know, asking us as the public, please, you know, call them, write them, you know, and, and convey your concerns, you know, if it's something that's, you know, important to you.
Could you pass that on to?
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. Yep, yep. And because there was a few names that were, that were mentioned that were quite important. But yeah, I'll get those over. And then there was a presentation by one of the local, like, community partners, which was really great. I forget their name. I left my material from this morning in my car, apologize. But in essence, they were just talking about what they've, you know, their partnership with the community and with Hillsborough County, and their main focus is helping citizens that have some sort of disability, and whether it is helping them secure housing or helping them to, you know, widen their doorways, you know, inside their homes or ramp, you know, things of that nature. And so just, you know, it was a really nice presentation. And then that was really our, our highlight.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Rodriguez?
Thank you. The city of Tampa had their Affordable Housing Committee meeting in January, and of highlight was, the city's acquired a couple of larger parcels, which they're considering for their affordable housing program. Usually you get single-family parcels and, and, you know, you, you worked rehabilitated. But there's a couple of parcels in the East Tampa area that the city is looking at, and they're, they're seeking the input from the committee members. and they're, they're seeking the input from the committee members as to how, how to use them. One of them seems to, based upon surrounding land uses, looks really good for a multifamily development. But one of them on Palafox is a good candidate for a tiny homes project and could possibly be the first tiny home project here in, for City of Tampa. So our next meeting will be February nineteenth, and we are actually going to have that at a tiny home manufacturer on Seventh Avenue called Able Nook. And we're gonna go tour their facilities and see how they're manufactured, the layouts, things of that nature, and also have our, have our monthly meeting there at their, their facility. So we're looking forward to that. That is nineteen February at one thirty.
Okay, thank you. Interesting. Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Give a little report on the River Board's Technical Advisory Council. Our last meeting, we had elections of officers, and I have the honor of being able to serve as vice chair for that committee again for another year. But during the course of our, our meeting, we had a couple of presentations. One from Tampa Bay Estuary Program on their Habitat Master Plan, where they talked about the, the background and current work that they were doing and targets for the different habitats that they have. And Sean's not in here anymore, but I want to say that they've, nineteen fifty's is, is pretty much the background for most of the habitat, for whether it's seagrasses or, or mangrove habitats and that sort of thing. That's kind of what they're, what they're shooting for, what their baseline is to measure everything against, to try to increase the habitats or get them back to those, those levels. And we also had a presentation, our draft presentation for the hydrobiological assessment of the Lower, Lower Hillsborough River. Forward report's gonna be discussed at our quarterly meeting in April. But that's a status on the, the values of, what is it, zooplancton and macroinvertebrates and the, the, similar to the habitat for FDEP. The, basically a, a report on the health of the river came from Southwest Florida Water Management District. And I believe the River Board met shortly after ours and asked that they, the Water Management District not necessarily accept that final report until, I want to say, until May, to give, to give the River Board a chance to have a little bit more review time to look at it. But that's my update.
Okay. Any comments, questions from commissioners? Nope? Wanted to remind everybody, we have a City of Tampa Plan Amendment public hearing at five-thirty. So other than that, we'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you.